August 8th, 2018, 2017. I'm jumping, I'm jumping ahead a year. That's how excited I am. 2017. If I could have all of you stand and join with us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. So, and I, as the Chair tonight, I really want to thank all of you for coming and participating in this meeting. We have very few rules, but there are a couple that I do want to go over. Our objective here is that we make sure that everyone feels as comfortable as possible. And in doing that, what we ask is that there be no cheering, booing, jeering, clapping, no applause for any of the comments. We just want to make sure that everyone who speaks feels comfortable and that we have a chance to hear them. So if, depending on how many people are coming in the room, we also ask that you not lean up against the walls and the paintings, and we've had some instances where that's happened as well. So don't stand on the furniture, don't dance on the furniture. It's pretty, pretty basic stuff. So at this point, I will look for a motion regarding the work session minutes of Tuesday, July 11th, and Tuesday, July 25th, as well as the formal meeting minutes of Tuesday, July 25th, 2017.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Kitchen.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Johnston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, the minutes are approved. Now we move to our public hearing section tonight. We do have a couple of public hearings, so I've already gone over the rules. Everyone, if you have, if you're interested in speaking, I hope that you will have filled out a card. If you have not filled out a card but are still interested in speaking to a specific public hearing, please do so. And then we have several staff members who are standing on the sides over here. You can hand your card to them. So what I'll do is I will read two names. The first name will be the person that's going to speak, and then the next person can be getting ready. Again, each person has two minutes. And at this point, we will move to the Truth and Taxation Hearing. This is our annual Truth and Taxation Public Hearing. So I have four cards right now for this. Mimi Charles, followed by Jana Ossler.
Thank you, Councilmember Luke. I'm Mimi Charles, resident of District 3 and former city board member, library board member. I'm here tonight to thank you for your strong support of the city library and for approving the library's budget, which does include a property tax increase to fund vital services and capital improvements. State law and city code require that the library be funded solely with property tax revenues, with no other charges to access and use our city libraries and all their contents and programs, whether it be for books, DVDs, CDs, magazines, Wi-Fi services, streaming music and videos, attending movie nights, storytimes, lectures, concerts, book clubs, and so much more. And with the council's support of the library's elimination of late fines, using the city library is now truly free. No added-on fees for any service, so thank you for that. Library cards are free and available to every city resident, and the library strives to make them more readily available. Cards are now automatically provided to every child where he or she is registered for school in the city. This is the beauty of public libraries. They are here for all of us, young and old, English-speaking or not, rich or poor, to use as much and as often as we can. And that means that library buildings get a lot of use and require all of us to invest a little more to take care of them. The library budget is all about taking care of the library's facilities, and I wholeheartedly support the property tax increase to do so. My family will pay $3.25 a month more than last year, and we're happy to pay it. Thanks to all of you for supporting the library and improving the budget. Raising taxes is never easy and shouldn't be done without significant need and in-depth scrutiny. The library's property tax increase meets that test and is well worth approval of the community's support. Finally, I want to personally thank each of you for the opportunity you gave me to serve for six years on the library board. It was a pleasure, an honor, and a privilege to do so. Thank you and happy reading.
Thank you, Ms. Charles. Jana Ossler, followed by James Berenson.
I'd like to echo Mimi's words. I currently am serving on the library board, and it is truly an honor and a privilege, and I thank you for that possibility. As many of you know, recent flooding, or flooding in recent weeks at our Sprague branch has left the branch damaged and temporarily closed, and many of our community are suffering from the effects of that closure. We hope to reopen the library as soon as possible. The cost of reconstruction may seem daunting, but thanks to fiscally conservative practices in the past, and also forward-thinking initiatives in this current budget, we're able to make many needed repairs, reducing the need to ask for public financial support to restore this historical community institution. And I just really would like to thank you for your support of our budget that has made a lot of that possible. It's probably, it may seem obvious that I'm a big supporter of the library since I have chosen to serve on this board. So rather than giving you some of my words of praise for the library, I'd like to share some words of praise from patrons that I have heard recently. These are just some quotes. "The library is a safe haven. It is a peaceful place. The library offers more than I expected." "The grant-seeking workshop blew my mind." "My sister taught me how to read in the library and to value books." "The staff at our library is always helpful. If they don't know how to help you, they will find a way to help." "The library is more about the experience than about the books." "It's connecting," or "it's something to do with the kids that helps keep them entertained." Is that my time? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ossler. James Berenson, followed by George Chapman, and those are the last cards that I have for this Truth and Taxation Public Hearing. If any of you would like to comment, just fill out one of the green cards and hand it to a staff member.
Greetings, comrades. Thank you for allowing me to address the Politburo. How is, you can even say "truth and taxation"? That, I don't even understand that at all. You guys get $237 million, and then you cry because you're a million dollars short? I'd done the math, and if the, if the, if the description was accurate, that's 90 square miles. So what does that equate to? About $2 million per square mile, yet the city looks like shit. There are potholes all over the place. You charge us to pay for the garbage, all this other stuff. Another thing that brings to mind is, how is this sewage tax regulated?
You know the rules, Mr. Berenson. Well, if you have questions, we can have our, you can talk to our staff after, but this is not, this is not an interchange.
Oh, I know, I'm not old and senile, so you can't, you can't interact with me, right? That's right. Sewage tax. If that is based on the water coming out of the faucet, what about the people watering their lawns? That is not going into the sewage line, yet they're getting taxed for that. Truth and taxation. You guys are all a bunch of hypocrites. I don't even understand how you get these jobs. All these sanctions you put on the herd, these, you will go back to the same herd that you were continually herding. I just don't undersee, understand that. That's like pulling the trigger on a gun when it's pointed down at your foot. Sooner or later, you're going to hit a live round, you're going to blow off part of your foot. Why would you do that? Makes no sense. There is no truth and taxation. Just progressive bullshit.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Berenson. George Chapman, and that is the last card that I have for this public hearing.
We did this last year. I'm still upset about the Truth and Taxation Hearing, because nobody really understands what you're doing, and that's a shame. You're actually, the library tax increase makes sense. Obviously, especially now after the flood, people now know how important it is for the library to be part of the community. But the property tax issue and the judgment levy to recoup some so-called "under-valued" properties, people won't know this until they get the property tax bill, and it'll be too late then. And I have a concern about that. And I wish you would be more open with the public and the citizens, because when they get the property tax bill, it'll be too late. They can't say anything about it. Well, they can go to the assessor or the county council and ask for a change, but this is a big deal, and I don't think anybody really understands that. So I'm against the judgment levy. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Again, that was the last card. I will look to Councilmember Penfold.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I move the council to close the public hearing and adopt an ordinance establishing the final rate of tax levy, including the final levy for the library fund upon all real and personal property within Salt Lake City made taxable by law for fiscal year 2017-2018, and ratify the budget as adopted by the council in June.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Penfold.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Johnston. Any discussion?
I would just like to speak to two issues. I want to, one more time, commend the library for some exceptional work in looking at how they can responsibly manage their facilities. And we have heard in these meetings, and I've heard from constituents, how amazing the library is and how much support there is out in our community for the library. We know that it's the number-one service behind fire department. We still haven't verified that yet, though, so. But I think they did a really incredible job, and the support that they've developed in the community around this particular budget demonstrates that they did a really exceptional job of reaching out to the community and demonstrating a direct correlation between the taxes we pay and the services we receive through the library. So thank you. I also just wanted to clarify that property owners did receive their property tax summary at least a couple of weeks ago, and so property owners at this point know what modifications to our budget will mean on their property tax by line item. They'll get a final bill at the end of the year, but that proposal, it went out from the county, and in fact, one of the reasons we have to schedule these meetings like we do is so that they have time to incorporate that mailing of property tax notices out before we have our Truth and Taxation Hearing. I will support this motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. The next public hearing is the Resolution Regarding the Interlocal Ag... The next public hearing is the Resolution Regarding the Interlocal Agreement for Parley’s Trail Through Hillcrest Park. And I don’t have any cards for that one. Is there anybody here that’s interested in speaking to this public hearing? Seeing none, I’ll look to the council for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the council to close the public hearing and approve the resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement between Salt Lake City Corporation and Salt Lake County for constructing a portion of Parley’s Trail, with the understanding that the county will maintain and repair the trail in perpetuity, as stated in the perpetual easement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Mendenhall. Any discussion to this item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The third public hearing is regarding an ordinance about building benchmarking and market transparency. And I see that there are a few cards. Thank you. And if anyone else, if you have not filled a card out, but you want to talk about the building benchmarking and market transparency, just fill one of these blue cards out and hand it to our staff. The first card is from Mandy McKenzie, and the second is from J.J. Coferd.
Hello, my name is Mandy McKenna, and I am a resident of the 4th District. I am also the property manager at Trolley Square. Trolley Square is an already-benchmarked property, and we have already done a substantial amount of sustainable projects at Trolley Square. Just to list a few, we’ve already converted our landscape to zero scape. We have changed the water tower lights to LED. We have converted all of our exterior lights to LED. We’ve replaced our boiler. We’ve done major repairs to our chiller and two of our air handler units. None of these were decided because of a benchmark number. We actually did all these while we were benchmarking, and throughout the process since we benchmarked, we’ve never looked at that number and used it to decide a project. Our projects are based on capital improvement budgets and things that are in current need to be repaired. Because of this, I think this needs to have more research and should be tabled until more effort is done towards this project. Right now, there’s a substantial amount of exemptions to properties that will not be included through this ordinance. It includes residential, heavy manufacturing plants, house of worship, buildings that contain movie, TV, radio production studios, data centers, trading floors, and the list goes on from here. When you take all these exemptions out, what impact does this ordinance actually have to our air quality and to sustainable projects? Because of this, like I said, I just feel this needs more time, more research, more accurate data, and until we have those things in place, we shouldn’t be passing an ordinance until we have more information in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Sorry for the mispronunciation originally. J.J. Coferd, followed by Chloe Gurkey.
Good evening, councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to voice my opposition to this building benchmarking and transparency ordinance being discussed this evening. The city continually alleged that commercial buildings contribute 40% of area source emissions, which has been the primary basis for pushing forward with the ordinance and garnering the support from public and other groups. Unfortunately, this data is misleading and incorrect. BOMA met with the Department of Environmental Quality to discuss the specific statistic, and the DEQ was unable to provide a source for this information internally or willing to verify that this number was correct. We were subsequently told that direct emissions or natural gas combustion usage during a typical winter day was roughly 18%. This included all commercial and school buildings. Removing schools drops down to 10%. Another report from the DAQ from 2016 states that commercial buildings specifically represent about 4% of local air pollution emissions on a typical winter day, so wide disparity. According to BOMA international sources, commercial buildings are directly responsible for roughly 6.5% of greenhouse gas emissions. So this illustrates the disparity between the two statistics as to how commercial buildings are really impacting air quality in Salt Lake area. So if commercial buildings really do represent roughly 4% of local air pollution emissions on a typical winter day, and religious buildings are exempt, then roughly 50% of the buildings in Salt Lake will be exempt. This is according to data presented by the Salt Lake City Council during the briefing on July 11. If this is truly the case, then we will only be impacting 2% of the direct emissions. From BOMA’s perspective, commercial buildings are being unfairly targeted, and the cost-benefit is too high. Approving this ordinance will not be judicious use of tax dollars.
Time.
It will be grossly irresponsible for the city’s lack of transparency, and more research is needed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Coferd. Chloe Gurkey, followed by Ed Talarico.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in opposition to the proposed mandatory benchmarking and disclosure ordinance. My name is Chloe Gurkey. I am the Director for Vector Management Group, and I manage over a million square feet of commercial real estate. I appreciate the efforts of the city to support cleaner air. However, commercial office buildings are really not the polluters. It has been stated that commercial buildings contribute 4% of the total air pollution, and I wonder why you are not really starting with a more significant sector where the changers will truly make a difference. We have been told that the goal in implementing this ordinance is to assist underperforming properties increase their energy performance. However, our concerns are, first, it’s not really the city’s responsibility to make the private-sector buildings more energy-efficient. Market competition has and will always continue to be a great motivator. Instead, the city should motivate property owners via incentives, which we find our property owners are much more receptive to. Energy use is also not a health, life, or safety concern, and thus should not be included in the city’s regulatory sphere. Salt Lake City has no resources to accomplish increasing energy efficiency in commercial real estate. I ask that you please reconsider this ordinance. Allow us in the industry to continue to voluntary benchmark, which will allow you to work on the other issues which are more pressing to all of us in Salt Lake City, such as our homeless issues, which cost our owners and tenants more than tens of thousands of dollars every year in repairs, security, and janitorial services. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gurkey. Ed Talarico, followed by Scott Benyon.
Members of Salt Lake City Council, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak before you on the proposed Benchmark and Disclosure Ordinance. My name is Ed Talarico. I’m the Sustainability Liaison for Building Owners and Managers Association of Utah, other known as BOMA Utah. As has been pointed out to you, BOMA Utah has been a vital part of energy efficiency in the state of Utah. We have worked closely with several clean energy organizations, as well as city, state, local governments, in developing clean energy solutions and legislation that has helped bring energy efficiency and solar to the forefront of Utah’s economy, making it a viable and positive return on investment. As BOMA Utah Sustainability Liaison, I am not here to oppose benchmarking or disclosure. I’m here to offer and ask you to consider another alternate solution. I would ask the Salt Lake City Council to hold off on passing a mandated benchmarking and disclosure ordinance, and instead, review and understand Utah’s C-PACE program that is available through the Governor’s Office of Energy Development. I would also ask the city council to sit down and work with BOMA Utah, Utah Clean Energy, the Mayor’s Office of Sustainability, the Governor’s Office of Energy Development, Utah’s utility organizations, and interested financial institutions to develop a template and launch a C-PACE program in Salt Lake City. This is a win-win approach, because if we take this approach, it would serve as to incentivize all building owners within the Salt Lake City to participate in energy efficient upgrades, reduce area emissions, and give the Mayor’s Office the same results without regulation. Participants would have to benchmark their facility and disclose their energy scores to qualify for the C-PACE program. Building owners would benefit from low-interest financing and energy upgrades, and we would all benefit from working together in partnership and showcase to others across the country that the public and private sectors can join forces for the common good. Can you imagine what we can do together? Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Talarico. Scott Benyon, followed by Shelley Menegos.
Good evening, councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to chat with you tonight. My name is Scott Benyon. I’m the BOMA Utah resident. I’ve also owned and operated commercial real estate for over 20 years. I have moderate asthma myself, and I support the idea of making our air cleaner. BOMA and I support voluntary benchmarking and encourage its members to report and use the Energy Star Portfolio Manager to report and benchmark their properties. BOMA and I oppose the proposed mandatory benchmarking and disclosure ordinance. Biggest question we’re asked is, why do we oppose something we’re already doing? A few answers to that. First, because the ordinance is unnecessary, and benchmarking on a voluntary basis is already working. Second, the ordinance as written doesn’t include all commercial buildings. There’s a laundry list of exempt organizations and buildings. Third, benchmarking doesn’t directly reduce emissions or waste. It’s just a report card. Four, why are we focusing on 4% of daily emissions versus combustion, engines, or heavy industry? And fifth, and finally, we need to focus on statewide solutions, not piecemeal initiatives from city to city. With problems are solutions. We’re not just opposed to this, we have some ideas. We’re willing to volunteer our buildings as test subjects and pilot programs. We’ve offered this repeatedly. We’re willing to place air monitoring equipment in and on our buildings to obtain good and reliable data. We will partner with the city to enhance participation in Project Skyline, something we already support and participate in as we speak. We suggest that you provide recognition to those who voluntarily participate and incentives to those who do not. And finally, provide even more recognition and even more incentives to those who can demonstrate a material increase in energy efficiency. I appreciate you listening to me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benyon. Shelley Menegos, followed by Kevin Connor.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Shelley Menegos. I am the Executive Director for the Building Owners and Managers Association, also known as BOMA. We represent over 75 million square feet of commercial space in Utah. As you are aware, BOMA Utah opposes the proposed mandatory benchmarking and disclosure ordinance simply for the fact that we, as an industry, are already voluntarily benchmarking. In a 2016 U.S. Clean Tech Leadership Index study, Salt Lake City was ranked eighth in Energy Star Buildings and Plants. This is due in large part to BOMA and its members voluntarily benchmarking. In addition, this ranking beat out 10 other cities with mandated benchmarking. My question to you is, what is the purpose of creating a mandate and shaming and fining building owners and enforcing an ordinance that can easily be voluntary? Use this opportunity to make it a voluntary program and reward those who participate and share their Energy Star scores, not impose fines for those who don’t. It’s the carrot-or-the-stick scenario. The city could offer expedited permits for new development and construction, waive or reduce permitting fees, provide UTA passes to buildings to encourage their tenants and employees to take mass transit, expand the Project Skyline awards to include those who are participating in a voluntary program. All this would be a great public-private-sector relationship and working with the commercial real estate industry instead of against it. We all want the same thing: cleaner air. The fact shows that commercial real estate is not the culprit. Even Utah Clean Energy reported, “Commercial buildings specifically represent 4% of the total local air pollution emissions on a typical winter day. If you remove the approximately 50% that will be exempt from this ordinance, state buildings, places of worship, you’re at 2%. How is this worth enforcing, and why would the city want to invest time, resources, and funds toward this? Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Menegos. Pardon my earlier mispronunciation. Kevin Connor, followed by Judy Barnett.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Connor, and I serve on the Market Leader Advisory Board for the Utah Chapter of the U.S. Green Building Council. Professionally, I’m a certified lighting designer and a senior project manager for Van Borm and Frank Associates. My remarks tonight are on behalf of USGBC Utah. I would like to point out that while large buildings here in Salt Lake are not solely responsible for our local air pollution problems, USGBC Utah believes that all buildings play an important role in reducing local air pollution. For example, Salt Lake City’s 2015 Community Greenhouse Gas Emissions Inventory shows the commercial building sector is responsible for over 2/3 of the greenhouse gas emissions emitted in the city. In LEED version 4, USGBC included a new category called “reverse contribution to global climate change.” This category is designed to help buildings identify, target, and reverse the primary drivers of climate change that are within the control of the building industry. It states, and I quote, “Reducing fossil-fuel-based energy consumption is the most impactful way a building can help reverse its contribution to climate change.” Specifically, strategies to target the reduction of energy use in building operations, which this ordinance does, is a smart strategy. Benchmarking and transparency policies represent a best practice for local policymakers to encourage building owners to improve building performance through increasing awareness of energy usage. This approach has been adopted in 24 other cities around the United States. A recent report published by the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory reports very high compliance rates and energy reduction trends, ranging from 2% per year to 14% over four years in cities with these policies in effect. This ordinance is a no-cost, well-thought-out, and impactful strategy to reduce emissions while simultaneously cutting building operating costs and saving businesses money. USGBC Utah is committed to assist Salt Lake City and the commercial real estate community to make implementation of this policy
Time.
...and successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Judy Barnett, followed by Jessica Reimer.
Good evening, councilmembers. It’s a pleasure and a privilege to come before you. My name is Judy Barnett, and I represent the Utah AFL-CIO. I’m the Executive Director of the Labor Community Services. Utah AFL-CIO supports a proposed benchmarking and transparency ordinance. This ordinance supports local jobs in the building services and efficiency sectors by promoting improved awareness of building energy performance. For example, when a facility manager benchmarks their building energy use and learns that their building’s Energy Star score has room for improvement, this process encourages voluntary investments in building energy improvements. Data from the National Energy Star Program found that buildings that regularly benchmark their energy use reduced energy consumption by 2% to 4% each year, or 7% over four years, as compared to buildings that did not regularly benchmark energy usage. While putting into practice energy updates remain voluntary, the Utah AFL-CIO believes that improved awareness of energy efficiency opportunities in large buildings will help connect facility managers with local workers to make energy improvements. The Utah AFL-CIO encourages you to adopt this ordinance. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you, Ms. Barnett. Jessica Reimer, followed by Ashley Miller.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment today. My name is Jessica Reimer, and I’m a Policy Associate at the local environmental nonprofit Heal Utah. We at Heal Utah are in favor of the Building Benchmarking and Transparency Ordinance. As an organization, we primarily focus on developing and supporting policies that improve air quality and create a landscape in favor of renewable energy. This ordinance in particular would be a step in the right direction for air quality in Salt Lake City. By implementing this ordinance, up to 30 tons per year of nitrogen oxide emissions, or NOx, could be reduced from our air shed. NOx emissions react with other molecules in the air to create secondary small particulate matter, or PM2.5, that accumulates in the valley during wintertime inversions. PM2.5 is a pollutant that can cause a host of respiratory and cardiac problems, from exacerbating asthma, symptoms of COPD and bronchitis, to increasing the risk of heart attacks, irregular heartbeat, and strokes. The Wasatch Front and surrounding areas have exceeded federal air quality standards for PM2.5 for almost a decade. Any measure that reduces emissions within the nonattainment area should be implemented, as there will never be one silver bullet to address this problem. With buildings in Salt Lake City representing nearly 32% of NOx emissions reductions available through benchmarking within the nonattainment area, we believe this ordinance would be a positive step towards improving air quality. It will also create a means to identify and support leaders It will also create a means to identify and support leaders within the city who recognize the important benefits of energy, that energy efficiency provides to both public health and the environment. We would have liked to see the ordinance be more ambitious than it currently is, as other cities have gone even further in their benchmarking standards. At the same time, we recognize the value of a collaborative process such as this one, which has taken into account the voices of industry, the private sector, and environmental and public health advocates who all have a stake in the outcome. We recommend adopting the ordinance as it is written, as we believe it is a good measure for Salt Lake City to take to improve both public and environmental well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reimer. Ashley Miller, followed by Thede Chappell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Ashley Miller. I'm the Policy Director for Breathe Utah. We're a local nonprofit air quality advocacy group. Air pollution negatively affects all of us in some way. ER visits spike during our inversions, and it's not just the, it's not just unhealthy for the sensitive groups or the vulnerable population. Ourselves, our children, our parents, our grandparents, our neighbors, people that we love and care about in this area, we're all going to be affected by our air pollution at some point. We recognize that waste from commercial building sector is not the leading contributor or the single piece of the air pollution pie, but we must acknowledge that it is a part of the problem, and this ordinance can help this sector become a bigger part of the solution. There is no one single answer. We have to address our air quality challenges from multiple directions, and we see this ordinance as an important step towards continued air quality improvement in Utah. Any energy waste is unnecessary emissions entering our airshed. We feel mandating benchmarking and transparency is the necessary push the city can give, because we've seen that voluntary programs have a very low participation rate. This market-driven policy will ensure that all building owners, managers, operators, and tenants will pay closer attention to their energy use. The 23 or 24 other cities throughout the nation that have similar policies in place have seen consistent savings and high compliance rates. And each year, Energy Star ranks cities based on the number of Energy Star certified buildings the city has, and the top-ranked cities all have similar benchmarking and transparency ordinances in place. I really hope that we can move away from the idea that this will lead to a public shaming of poorly performing buildings. This just isn't simply the Utah way. We hold each other up, we lift each other up, we support each other when we're doing something great. We see this as an opportunity to recognize and highlight and promote the success stories that are sure to come. Continued improvements to the quality of our air is important to everyone in our valley, and we hope that you share our support for this sound policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Thede Chappell, followed by Gary Bullock.
You did really well with that. It was Thede Chappell.
Oh, good. After massacring two, at least I got one right.
That's good. My name is Thede Chappell, and I'm here to speak to you in favor of the benchmarking ordinance. I have a business called Sustainable Values, and I am a real estate valuation consultant. I work with owners, developers, investors to maximize asset value. The commercial real estate market is clearly focused on more efficient, high-performing buildings, not just nationally but globally. This has a direct impact on where companies locate and investors decide to invest. Increasingly, investors are looking for more progressive markets that support policies which promote or incentivize energy efficiency and high performance in their building stocks. Studies by reputable groups such as the Institute for Market Transformation in Washington, D.C., have proven buildings with documentably lower operating costs sell for higher amounts on a per-square-foot basis and can command higher rents, in some cases as much as 17%. My personal experience has been that these types of buildings get top-of-the-market rents and not necessarily premiums, but they do tend to have better tenant retention, less downtime between leases, and higher tenant renewal probabilities, all of which have positive impacts on the bottom line and asset value overall. Institutional investors have a preference for energy-efficient buildings with certifications, and investment criteria often cite the need for LEED certification or, at the very least, LEED-based construction measures. For principal prudential real estate investors, Bintal Kennedy, Goldman Sachs, who has supported your 111 and 222 Main Street are good examples of this type of investment by major league players. I have had multiple discussions, presentations, interactions with these types of groups, and overall, their belief is that purchasing, developing, and investing in higher-performing, energy-efficient buildings is a risk mitigation strategy that is a means of future-proofing their investments. In closing, benchmarking is an indication to younger market participants that a city is progressive and enacting policies in which they believe, and it could prove critical to attracting and retaining new talent for Salt Lake. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chappell. Gary Bullock, followed by Randy Woodbury.
Thank you, council members, for this opportunity. My name is Gary Bullock. I'm the Director of Operations in the Managing Broker for a company called Millrock Management. We're a real estate development company and management company. I'm also the Government Affairs Chair and Legislative Chair for BOMA Utah and for IRAM Utah, the Institute of Real Estate Management. There's a couple of things that have become apparent to me this evening, as I've sat here and listened to the public hearing here. One is that the numbers are all over the place. We have varying and conflicting numbers and statistics that are being thrown out and quoted. And for that purpose alone, I recommend and would suggest that we table this item so that we can have further research. The second thing that's become apparent to me is we all have the same desire, the same goal. We all want cleaner air, we want better and more energy-efficient buildings. One thing that I've been advocating for over the past couple of years, and even with Salt Lake City and the staff that have been working on this particular item, is that we work together, that this has become a win-win situation. It's not us against you, this is a win-win situation, because we do have the same desired outcome in this. BOMA Utah, the commercial real estate industry, has worked very diligently and very hard, and we have led the way over the last couple of years in benchmarking and trying to make our buildings more energy-efficient. Benchmarking, we are 100% in favor of benchmarking. In fact, we have hired a consultant to go around to work with all buildings to try to help them benchmark their buildings. It is a goal and objective that we have, and again, we've been leading the way in that. However, benchmarking, it's a tool, it's not a solution. What we need to do is we need to come up with a tool or a solution, and the way we do that is we have to work together. We need a win-win. I've advocated and said that we do need to be able to come together, take the resources that we both have, the experience, the expertise, and work together. Part of the commitment that we can make from a legislative standpoint is to work with our legislators as well, because this is not just a Salt Lake City issue, this is a statewide issue, and that's a commitment we can make to you to work together with the legislatures up on the Hill to try to make this a statewide solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Randy Woodbury, followed by Kevin Emerson.
Good evening. Randy Woodbury from Woodbury Corporation. We office up on Parley's Way in Salt Lake. I also want to speak against the mandate. As an owner and manager of several commercial buildings in Salt Lake City and many more outside of the city, I can tell you that every building has a story. Every building is unique in one way or another, whether intended or not, building design, electrical, mechanical engineering. Operating performance can vary greatly, even in cases where buildings were intended to be twins of one another, and that doesn't address the biggest wildcard, which is occupancy and tenancy, and within the buildings themselves. An ordinance such as this is fraught with potential problems when attempting to measure individual building performance to a one-size-fits-all policy. Similar to what was mentioned with Trolley Square, you know, the question is, where's the starting line? The fact that I've spent well over $1 million for rooftop solar on my corporate office building, you know, how fair is that if the baseline is set today? And there will have to be some type of exception for that. We own and manage several buildings in the University Research Park, lots of tenancy turnovers, lots of changes of use in there, and replacement of a tenant that is mostly light office by a research lab can cause huge swings in utility and operating expenses. Again, those types of changes will require some type of exception to prevent the application of the mandate from just being patently unfair. In the end, my fear is that there will be many more exceptions than there are rules, which is usually an indication of a problematic program. Most of the significant commercial buildings in Salt Lake are managed by professionals in the industry. Most are affiliated with one or more of the professional associations, whether it be BOMA, IRAM, NAOP, IFMA, ICSC, and others. I don't think we've worked well enough together to coordinate, but I know that that can be done. The fact is, most of us are making upgrades just because it makes good business sense, and I think we can continue to do that, and appreciate you listening. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Woodbury. Kevin Emerson, followed by Jonathan Ruga.
Hi, council members. Thanks for taking the time to hear our comments tonight. I know you've already had a long day. My name is Kevin Emerson. I'm a Program Director with Utah Clean Energy. We work to accelerate the transition to a clean energy economy. Utah Clean Energy strongly supports this adoption of this ordinance. It'll help improve efficiency in large buildings, it'll help improve air quality, and importantly, it'll help the city achieve its quite ambitious and laudable community-wide greenhouse gas emission reduction goals. And it does this without imposing new costs on business. This ordinance uses market forces to encourage reduction in energy waste by setting a level playing field among large buildings to annually measure and report their energy performance data. It's a no-cost strategy really designed to improve awareness of how buildings are performing, and especially how buildings perform against each other. And it makes it easier for businesses and tenants and investors to identify which buildings are the most efficient in the market, kind of like a miles-per-gallon rating for vehicles, which we currently have access to. Some in the industry have expressed concern that publishing energy data will shame less efficient buildings. And the ordinance actually has been changed to address this concern by only highlighting the most efficient buildings in the market, instead of sharing the full set of energy data. Currently, across the country, 10 billion square feet in 23 American cities fall under benchmarking and transparency ordinances, and data shows that the ordinances that are well-designed, they're simple, they're simple to comply with, and they're impactful. Some believe that a high level of benchmarking can be achieved through voluntary programs alone, and the voluntary programs are a great start, but we disagree that it's enough. For example, in Portland, Oregon, they delayed adoption of their ordinance to see if voluntary benchmarking could reach a larger percentage of the city's building stock. When participation reached only about 25% of their target, they adopted a mandatory benchmarking policy, and in the first year, they had an 82% compliance rate. Cities with successful ordinances in place also include other complimentary programs like help desks and report cards, and we'd like to see that in place in Salt Lake City as well, and we just urge your support for the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emerson. Jonathan Ruga, followed by Verleen Kelsey McKee.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Ruga, and I'm the CEO of Sentry Financial Corporation, headquartered here in Salt Lake City. One of our four divisions focuses on the development and ownership of real estate, and Sentry supports the proposed ordinance primarily for two reasons. First, it will empower businesses to help achieve the Salt Lake City Council's and Mayor Biskupski's critical citywide goal to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions by 80% by 2040. Energy efficiency is a key initiative to achieve this goal, because efficiency is the most affordable way to reduce emissions while simultaneously lowering utility costs to owners and tenants. Reducing local air pollution is complex and requires a multifaceted, behavioral-changing strategy. Increased efficiency in our building stock is a component of that strategy and will materially contribute to cleaner air, which, of course, has substantial health and economic consequences. And second, the ordinance will improve awareness of energy performance in large buildings, and therefore, will encourage such building owners to proceed with energy efficiency projects. When buildings are more efficient, they're more valuable. Energy Star Buildings and LEED-certified Buildings have higher sales values, higher occupancy, and improved lease rates. This ordinance is a significant step in the right direction, as it promotes a positive energy policy in Salt Lake City, and we urge you to vote in favor of it. However, I believe it would be even more beneficial if the disclosure provisions were to apply not just to the most energy-efficient buildings, as the ordinance is currently drafted, but rather to all buildings irrespective of their Energy Star scores. We should be promoting transparency that will allow prospective tenants and purchasers to make more informed decisions. Such a change in the ordinance would incentivize even more building owners to initiate efficiency projects, which is really what we should be seeking to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruga. Verleen Kelsey McKee, followed by Ron McKee.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for giving the public a chance to participate in a really important process in our community. I actually checked the box that said I was not going to speak "but." I would like to speak in support of the ordinance. I would like to see it broadened. I think it could do more than it does. It actually seems a little weak to me in terms of the way that it is written. I'd like to see it do more. I think anything that we can do to bring down the tremendous public health costs of air pollution in the Salt Lake Valley is extremely important. It doesn't just affect the people that own buildings and those, but it affects the entire community in terms of what it costs to keep people healthy. So I think those are values that we need to seriously consider any time we look at trying to reduce pollution. I don't care what the percentage of it is. It's good for all of us, and it's good public policy, so thank you for considering it.
Thank you, Ms. Kelsey McKee, and I now see that you did check the "I do not want to speak" box, so my apologies. And I see also that Ron McKee checked the "I do not want to speak" box, so I will then move forward with Greg Schlegel, followed by Susan Finlayson.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Greg Schlegel. I am a Vice President and Owner of ETC Group. We're an energy efficiency consulting firm based in Sugar House in Salt Lake City, and we employ 23 people here in Salt Lake City dedicated to improving the efficiency of buildings and industrial processes in our community. Since we opened our doors in 1988, we've seen the energy efficiency sector grow in Utah considerably. I think this is somewhat due to some great utility programs through Rocky Mountain Power and Questar Gas, formerly Questar Gas, but also because energy efficiency is a strategy that helps businesses bottoms, bottom, businesses' bottom line, but it also reduces emissions, and in this case, will help with our air quality issues here in Utah. On average, a commercial building wastes approximately 20% to 30% of its energy, an average commercial building. Sometimes these issues are easy to find, sometimes they're very complex, but in general, that inefficient energy use translates to unnecessary cost and emission, cost to the building owner, emissions to the community. In my experience working across the city, the state, the country, and internationally, more information will help building owners make better decisions. The ordinance that you're considering is all about improving the availability of information. It creates a framework that requires all large buildings to annually benchmark their consumption, and I believe this ordinance will help improve awareness of energy efficiency opportunities. It will encourage efficiency improvements. It will save building owners money. It will help reduce emissions, and it'll help reduce emissions for all of us. So I hope you will vote in favor of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlegel. Susan Finlayson, followed by James Berenson. And then following Mr. Berenson, I have one more card, so if there is anybody else that's interested in speaking, just fill out a blue card and hand it to one of our staff members.
Hi, I'm Susan Finlayson. I am a resident of Salt Lake City. I just moved into District 6. I sent you an email last week about this. So air quality is important to me as a resident here in Salt Lake City. The pollution in our valley, it makes it ugly, it bums us out, it makes us sick, literally. And I commend the developers here who are representing and showing that they are voluntarily benchmarking, but I think we need to do better. We're in an air quality crisis, we're in a climate crisis, and this is just a really simple step of something that we should be doing. So I do support the Building Benchmarking and Transparency Ordinance. I think it would be a simple, market-based policy tool. In 23 cities that already have a similar ordinance, large building energy use has dropped between 3% to 8%, so it's a proven method, and this ordinance will help us clean our air in our valley, and it'll get us closer to our greenhouse gas reduction goals, which are also really important to me, and I think that Salt Lake City- And I think that Salt Lake City needs to be leaning on this. So thank you, and please pass this ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Finlayson. James Berenson, followed by Brett Perry.
Yeah, I just got to say, you know, all this stuff you guys hypothesize about this UN BS. There's a gentleman named Mark Moreno. He made a movie called Climate Hustle. That refutes most of the things that I think you guys are trying to achieve is irrelevant, and it doesn't change. In fact, if you go to the website, climate depot dot com, it says the earth is experiencing a CO2 shortage. A member from the last meeting tried to explain this to you, but you know, plants exhale oxygen, so to speak, while they take in CO2. So if we drop all the CO2, how is it trees and vegetation that provide us with oxygen, how are those going to be able to sustain themselves if they have nothing to feed off of? You know, I just don't understand this. I think the transparency is, you know, taxation. That's the transparency. You know, the haves and the have-nots. We got to make sure we tax everyone. How many of you actually take the bus or ride your bike to work? Show of hands. Not surprising, but you care about the environment, but you don't care enough to ride the bus, to ride your bike. I like that. This is the same kind of theology that when there was the homeless crisis, I asked each of you, you're so concerned about them, why don't you take some of them to your homes off the street? But once again, you said no. It's like, you know, you guys have way too much power. It's disgusting that you want to impose these sanctions on people that have no real way to fight back. But all the people in the audience, I would suggest you go to that climate depot dot com and watch the video, Climate Hustle. It verifies everything's all the facts I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Berenson. Brett Perry is the last card.
Hi, I'm Brett. On behalf of Utah Astro, I'm the chapter president of the Astro chapter. We're a society of mechanical engineers, about 350 members strong locally, 55,000 members internationally. There's just two points that I wanted to make. I personally work in the building automation world. What that means is the air conditioning, the lighting, all those different points are usually tied into a computer front-end system. Not every building needs it. Not every building has it. But one of the things that you guys probably know too is that what you measure, that what you don't measure, you can't fix. What this ordinance does, in effect, is it allows people to measure what they're seeing. If you don't know, you don't know. I mean, so the second point that I wanted to make is this is similar to cars. There's standards, there's emissions, testing that cars have to go through. Why not do the same for buildings? That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Seeing that that is the last card, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close this public hearing and defer action to a future council meeting.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Mendenhall. Any discussion to this motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, and the item is deferred to a future agenda. The next public hearing that we have, sorry, is an ordinance regarding the fine-tuning of our zoning code amendments. And I don't have any cards for this. If there is anyone who would like to speak to the fine-tuning of zoning code amendments? Seeing none, I'll look to the council for a motion.
Chair, I move the council to close the public hearing and defer action to a future council meeting.
Councilmember Adams made a motion. Second by Councilmember Penfold. Any discussion to Councilmember Adams' motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, and the item is deferred to a future agenda. The next is an ordinance regarding a street closure at 740 North, 800 West. And I don't have any cards for this one either. Is there anyone interested in speaking to this? Seeing none, I'll look to my colleagues for a...
Mr. Chair, I move that the council close this public hearing and defer action to a future council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mendenhall, second by Councilmember Adams. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The item is deferred to a future agenda. Our sixth public hearing is a resolution regarding 800 North, 800 West, informational public benefits analysis.
Informal, that would be.
Informal, yes. Thank you. And I have two cards here. One is from Patrick Beaker. The next is from Calvin Fores.
Good evening, council. My name is Patrick Beaker with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Here with my union brothers here tonight. Just want to express the best way to benefit the public with giving the land away for this community center is to ensure that responsible contractors build it. Responsible contractors pay area standard wages, insurance, and retirement benefits to all their employees on all their projects. You know, Salt Lake City has a ton of construction going on right now. It's being performed by out-of-state contractors and contractors that cheat by not paying payroll taxes, workers' compensation insurance, area standard wages, or insurance benefits to their employees. The sad thing is nobody's checking on it. It's rampant. Untold dollars are being stolen from the city and state through these practices. I see it every day. And the worst thing is there's becoming less opportunity for young men and women in this construction industry to get a fair shake with these practices spreading. They should do the right thing and ensure that area standards are upheld with this community center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beaker. Calvin Fores. And Calvin is the last, Mr. Fores is the last card that I have. If there are any other cards, fill out this light blue card.
Good evening, council. My name is Calvin Fores. I represent for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I represent not only our responsible signatory contractors, but also these great carpenters standing here, sitting here behind me. They work hard every day, and they contribute to their community. They pay taxes. Anyone in this room knows what taxes pay for. In your efforts to generously provide a means for the Good Samaritan Foundation to assist in welcoming refugees to this great community, I ask that you increase your efforts to guarantee that the labor force building this project is doing their part, that the contractors are paying payroll taxes, that they're paying workmen's comp, and they're providing a livable wage with benefits. That allows those workers to give back to their communities and not be a burden. And it also allows this city to increase the money in their coffers to provide more for their constituents, for that community. It's a big circle. It's a big cycle. Helping one group at the detriment of another is not good government. Responsible contractors allow its workforce to be a contribution to their communities. Look into current projects using public funds around this community and ensure that the pattern is not repeated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fores. I don't see any other cards. Seeing none, I'll look to my colleagues for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the council to close the public hearing and defer action to a future council meeting.
Motion by Councilmember Kitchen, second by Councilmember Adams. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The next three items on the agenda will be heard as one public hearing. The first is a grant application for Homeland Security Grant Program Urban Area Security Initiative for fiscal year 2017, as well as a grant application for the Folsom Trail Shared Use Path Enhancements Transportation Alternatives Projects for 2017. And another grant application for the Cultural Corridor Consortium, the Folsom Trail City Creek Corridor Creative Placemaking. And I have two cards here for this one. James Berenson, followed by Nigel Swaby.
Since you guys like giving out money to useful causes, I would ask that I get like $500,000, I would like for a grant that I would like to use to investigate truth in taxation and audit the books. I think that is a very, that could also co-imply with a homeland security because we have traitors within our midst. And, you know, I would like to root these progressives out of our republic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berenson. Nigel Swaby.
Thank you, council members. I am the chair of the River District Business Alliance, which is in support of the Folsom Corridor development. I'm also a resident of the area, and I'm definitely supportive of the train track improvements on Sixth West and Ninth West, which are part of the project. And as a group, we are also very supportive of community involvement with developing the art and visual improvements in the area. And I can tell you that Mr. Johnston does indeed ride his bicycle to meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Swaby. Having no further cards, is there anyone else who would like to speak to these grant applications? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the council to close the public hearing for grant applications, items B7 through B9, and defer action to a future council meeting.
Second, motion by Councilmember Kitchen, second by Councilmember Johnston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The item is deferred to a future agenda. We're now on to our potential action items. Let me look here. So we have just one potential action item. It's an ordinance regarding 5420 West John Cannon Drive zoning map amendments.
Mr. Chair, I move the council to adopt an ordinance amending the zoning map pertaining to three parcels located at approximately 5420 West John Cannon Drive from AG to M1, and remove the parcel from the Lowland Conservation Overlay District.
Great. A motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Adams. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We're now on item D on our agenda, which is comments and questions to the mayor from the city council. Are there any questions or comments for Mayor Biskupski's representative, Chief of Staff Patrick Leary, and Deputy Chief of Staff David Litbeck?
Yes, I have one.
Okay, Councilmember Mendenhall.
Will the administration be conducting the biannual citizen survey this year?
Yes, we just started working on that this last week.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, so the next item is our open comments to the city council. These are not topic-specific, but it's an opportunity for you to address us. Each person will have two minutes. The rules of decorum are the same as our previous public hearings. The first name that I have here is Bonnie Peters Gabrielson, followed by Douglas Kotant.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here to address the council and the mayor's representatives. And each of you should have a letter in front of you, and there's one there for Mayor Biskupski, Mr. Litbeck. I come here on behalf of citizens in District 6, in District 5, and other areas of Salt Lake City as well. An article was posted in the Desert News on July 28th, 2017, detailing the cost of keeping our mayor safe. This caught our attention, and it was the price tag of $163,000 that raised our concerns as we discussed it at the informal meeting we held last week. In a city of approximately 193,000 people, and at this age of advanced technology and security, the cost for providing two bodyguards to protect one person seems unreasonably high. That same amount could have provided the citizens with four more policemen on our streets to protect us all. The reality is that unfortunately, many things could happen to our mayor. But many things can and do happen to people, to citizens, every day. Unfortunately, by virtue of seeking to be a public elected official, there is an inherent risk, element of risk, in that endeavor. Certainly, we want to keep our mayor and our elected representatives safe. Yet we need to be wise regarding this expenditure of our tax dollars. We pose the following questions that we would like answers to. Do current programs or lack of programs in Salt Lake City put the mayor in excessive danger? And is a threat to life, her life, imminent? If the threat is verified as real, rather than a could-be-real situation, what is also being done to increase protection for the residents and visitors to our city? Is the present level of protection and the cost excessive? And then there are some ideas there that, if so, things that could be done to eliminate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gabrielson. Douglas Kotant, followed by Amir Cornell.
First of all, first of all, I would like to apologize because the gentleman who spoke in the true conversation used a couple of foul words. We don't do that in a public meeting, and I'm not going to do it. And secondly, I'm a little bit curious about housing because apparently they have me on a waiting list. And I called to the lady at the front desk. Her name is Inez. She claimed she asked me when my name was put on the list. And she looked it up, and she told me February 28th of last year. Now I have to wait until February 28th of next year. And I would like to move out of the New Land Apartments as quickly as possible. And if I decide that, I'm sure that the members of my LDS ward would help me move. I'm wondering, should I write this, Inez, and my housing coordinator a letter about this, or should I not? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kotant. Amir Cornell, followed by James Berenson. Amir left. Okay, so James Berenson, followed by Bernie Hart.
Mr. Chapman brought up a couple of interesting things last meeting. He said that, you know, plants that the taxpayers have spent thousands and thousands of dollars on are dying because the mayor's office has decided to ration the amount of water parks and wrecks can use. You have a fountain right out there. Why not use that water? I saw a fountain at the library, too. Why not shut the water off to those things and actually water the things that the taxpayers have spent money on? Just an idea. You won't answer how the sewage tax is regulated. I wish to call a vote for no confidence against the mayor again. The 25th Amendment in the Bill of Rights says someone's mental instability is cause for removal. So her actions, I would highly suggest that the chairman be removed because she is obviously unstable. I would like two bodyguards to protect me all the time. But unfortunately, I don't get that luxury. I'm not fancy enough or elevated enough in my status to need that. And somehow I face greater threats than she does. Once again, I would just have to ask, you know, there's action and reaction. Maybe her mental instability isn't as clear as she seems to purvey it to be. So maybe these actions she's doing is causing her life to be put in jeopardy. I don't know. But once again, I would like to call for a vote of no confidence. Do I need to get a second?
This is, you understand the rules, right?
I'm not a big fancy lawyer. I don't understand crap. I understand the Bill of Rights, which leads me to this point. You guys sit here and limit... You guys sit here and limit, I, I'm a United States citizen, I'm a Utah resident.
Time.
The United States Constitution and the Utah State Constitution, I, I enjoy those rights, yet the, the warden there just informed me that my freedom of speech, a God-given right, you can override that. How, how is that? Do you have a communique from God?
Mr. Berenson.
Saying that he relinquishes your power?
Mr. Berenson.
His power to you so that you can override the freedom of speech? How, how does that work?
Everyone gets two minutes in a public hearing, so...
But you're, you're saying that you have more power than God.
Thank you for your time.
How, how, how is that you have more power than God?
Thank you for your time, Mr. Berenson.
I've asked to get a case file on this. I was told that last meeting. The lady told me I did it today. I haven't received it. I want to know...
Your time, your time is up.
How does your power supersede that of God's?
If you continue to disrupt the meeting, I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
I'm not disrupting anything. I have a simple question. I was promised answers tonight, which I have not received.
You're disrupting the meeting.
That's what I want to know. Where does your power come from that you can supersede God and limit our freedom of speech? How does it work?
Your time is up.
Says who?
Thank you.
Did God tell me my time is up?
I'm the chair, I'm the chair right now, and I said your time's up.
I thought the chairman was the chair. Oh, that's right, the chairman has to actually show up and do her job.
Thank you, Mr. Berenson.
I, I'd like an answer.
Please.
I'd like an answer. I, I do not see a badge, and if you touch me, I will defend myself. I don't care. He's a regular citizen. He's not a law officer. Or what? Okay. For what? You're going to toss me down the stairs?
Mr. Berenson.
What, what state statute is that? State statute? What state statute am I breaking?
I'm trying not to touch you, respect you, so let's go.
How does your power supersede that of God, where you can take away people's freedom of speech?
Bernie Hart, followed by Jim Webster.
I appreciate that, because sometimes I feel like Mr. Berenson. I didn't know how to start this conversation, but he helped me immensely. And I'm here frequently talking about homelessness, and I think everybody here knows that we do more of our share of working with that community than a number of people in the city. We care, and we are exploring new ideas with that population. And we have worked hard to develop things that are effective in working with that community. And we want to move forward with this effort and expand it. And there's an issue, a couple of issues that are, points I'd like to make that are, may seem unconnected, but are really relevant to what we're doing. And discussions in a number of people in the community, the county, the city, members of the council, their staff, when we point out that the system is not functioning very well, and there seems to be a high level of dysfunction in the sys, system, we get a blank look. People look at us like we're the problem because we're pointing out a problem that mayor, that hopefully that people don't want to see and don't want to acknowledge. So they pretend that there are answers, and they pretend there are such solutions to the problem, and we see that down in the Rio Grande all the time. The mayor has a, and her staff has a set of solutions to the collective impact. Speaker Hughes has his solution to the problem. The Downtown Alliance has their solution to the problem, and nothing happens. Nothing changes. We're out to change that. That's not good enough. That's no way to address problems. The first step is acknowledging that what is there in place does not work. Over the last month and a half, I have put in a number of requests to the Salt Lake County...
Time.
About getting data about the effectiveness of current programs. They don't return our calls. I think there's something more that can be done, and we're going to be addressing and meeting with each one of you over the next month or so, and we'll be calling up and requesting meetings, and we're going to be laying out what we'd like to do and requesting information about programs that, so that we can compare data for what we plan on doing compared to what the city is now doing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Thank you very much.
Jim Webster. Jim is the last card that I have. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during the public comment?
My name is Jim Webster. I'm a resident of District Six. I'm a landscape architect and a land planner, and I don't think I can compete with the drama that's preceded me. I'm here tonight to compliment the mayor and the mayor's staff, and certainly the city council, those of you who participated in the decision not to sell the property at Sunnyside Park at the University of Utah. There's a lot more to it than that. It, that is viewed, I think, as a public health issue, and certainly it is. It's across the street from the Penry School, which I'm sure the mayor became aware of because of Robin Hood, Robin, or wasn't it Julie Hood? Robin Hood, Root, Julie Hood talked to her about that. It's also adjacent to the Valor House, which is veterans with PTSD, and it's, of course, in Sunnyside Park, and as Charlie can certainly affirm, we have probably the least per capita green space in developed parks of any other district in the city. In addition to that being a public health issue, it's also a land use planning issue, if you think about it. I talked to Miller Sports and Entertainment, and the real reason that the baseball team wants to move out of a triple-A stadium, which defies logic to a lot of people, is because of money. They can't enjoy the benefits of the concessions, they can't invite their sponsors to post signage all over the place and so forth. And so, the idea of scheduling being the problem and the reason for a move is really a red herring. And, you know, having looked at this situation quite a bit, the Tribune reported that the mayor had, had decided not to sell the property, and it would sound like, well gee, what's a poor university going to do? They don't have any other alternatives. Well, they really do. And I submitted a photograph for your consideration. That site is probably the best site you could imagine for a baseball field. It's adjacent to three other spring sports, track and field, softball, and some other things as well. And I really encourage...
Time.
Those of you who can communicate this idea to the university that it's a much better alternative and certainly would be better for the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Webster. That will conclude our open questions and comments to the city council. We'll now move to item E on our agenda. We have a couple of items. The first one is an ordinance, the Revised Employment Staffing Document for Fiscal Year 2017, 2018.
Mr. Chair, I move the council adopt an ordinance amending the Employment Staffing Document Regarding Changes to the Office of the Mayor as Part of the Salt Lake City's Final Budget for Fiscal Year 2017, 2018.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Johnston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. I'm going to, I'm going to take a quick, make a quick diversion from the agenda and go to our council executive director. She has a couple of, of, of items of interest regarding the next item that we're going to be talking about.
Yes, earlier tonight, in your briefing about the West Capitol Deadline Extension, the administrative staff contacted our staff afterwards to say that they accidentally gave you some incorrect information. They indicated they double-checked, and a request from a citizen would not trigger a public hearing on a subdivision. So, based on that, we worked with Councilmember Penfold and came up with an option that would allow you to get some public input. So, that'll be the third option, I tell you. The first option is to vote to extend the, the action so that they can have two more years. The second option is to decline to extend that, and then if the developer were interested, they'd have to start in the beginning of the process and have the notification and all of the hearings. The third is kind of the hybrid that we talked with Councilmember Penfold about, and that is to extend briefly, perhaps for four months, so that they don't lose their standing. Require them to go back to the community council and whatever else you want them to do, but require them to take particular action that gets more public input in this four-month period, and then, providing they do what it is you request, you then could consider extending their time further. So, the motion number three, it's on a white sheet that Brian passed out to you. Time extension, West Capitol Street.
Cindy, it got modified into the regular motion sheet, so it's on a blue.
Oh, it is on blue now? Well, okay.
Your staff is pretty incredible.
They are.
There you go.
They are.
Okay, so those are your choices.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilmember Penfold.
Mr. Chair, I, I move that the council grant a four-month extension to the time period for satisfying conditions set forth in the ordinance number fifty-six of 2016, and require the petitioner to present the modified subdivision plans to the Capitol Hill Neighborhood Council for feedback. Following the community council presentation, the petitioner may return to the city council with a request for a further exten, uh, excuse me, to further extend the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Johnston. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, just briefly, what Cindy said, "and," I think it's sufficient to go to the community council. They're very engaged in this neighborhood. They were engaged in the original process. It would put this back on our agenda towards the end of the year, or whenever the petitioner actually came forward after they completing, going forward to the community council, but they would have to identify to us that they have done that and that they want additional extension time. I figured at that time, it would be a pretty minor ordinance amendment to extend that time again.
Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll now move to item F on our agenda, our unfinished business. We have a couple of items. One is resolution regarding a general obligation refunding bonds, series 2017B.
Mr. Chair, I move the council adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not more than $16 million in general obligation refunding bonds, delegating authority to certain officials and officers of the city within parameters set forth in the attached bond resolution, and providing for related matters.
Motion by Councilmember Kitchen, second by Councilmember Mendenhall.
Any discussion to this item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is an ordinance regarding updating memorandum of understanding for American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees.
Mr. Chair, I move the council rescind ordinance thirty-three of 2017 and adopt a new memorandum of understanding between Salt Lake City Corporation and the, and the American Federal of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1004.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mendenhall, second by Councilmember Kitchen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Sorry. The next is an ordinance regarding Central Telecom Services LLC franchise agreement.
Mr. Chair, I move the council adopt an ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise agreement to Central Telecom Services.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Johnston. Any discussion to this item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is an ordinance regarding Transportation Advisory Board Amendment.
Mr. Chair, I move that the council adopt an ordinance amending Salt Lake City Municipal Code 2.23 pertaining to the composition and duties of the Transportation Advisory Board.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Johnston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. We're now to item G, our consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kitchen, second by Councilmember Mendenhall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And we are adjourned.
Do we have a quick announcement, Cindy? I think we have one quick announcement, yeah.
Yes, and you've received this, and you probably know, but on September 12th, the chair and vice chair are proposing that we use that afternoon and evening meeting for a council retreat discussion time. So, you would, if you could, come at one o'clock for the RDA meeting, and then we would finish that up, and then go offsite for a retreat discussion, a three-part retreat discussion. Of course, it's open to the public, too, but if you could just get that on your calendars, we're hoping it'll work for you because it is a regular meeting night. Okay, that's it.